My name is Katie Crumpie. I'm the Chief Academic Officer for Torrance. Thank you so much for coming out. We got a little break in the weather, so you can stay dry as you got in here this evening. Would like to just do a couple of quick introductions. We have a school board mayor member, Jeremy Gerson, here this evening. And our superintendent, George Mannan. And our Senior Director of Elementary Schools, Dr. Edon Kim. And we have a lot of school administrators and personnel people wave. I'm not going to individually. There was, we've got a lot of people here interested in this event, this evening. So again, thank you very much. Without any further ado, I want to introduce Alex Gray. And I had the pleasure, Alex spoke on two different days to every student at Torrance High School. And I had the pleasure of listening to him speak. And he's going to be our keynote and open our evening up tonight. And I think you're in for a really good experience with Alex. So, gonna let him tell his story. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I'd first like to applaud the Torrance Unified School District. You guys, bar none, have done an amazing job looking outside of educating your students and going as far as trying to better them as people and communicate with them in a way to help them through these issues like vaping and substance abuse and mental health. I went on a speaking tour from San Pedro to El Segundo the last month. Spoke to 10 schools, from a 5th grade elementary to middle school to high school. And it was about 10,000 kids. And I have to let you guys know that you guys are in a league of your own in the way that you look after your students in a bigger picture. So I really want to applaud you guys for that. So, great job. I agree. Thank you for the opportunity. This is fun. I am a Torrance resident. For those of you who don't know me, I grew up through the Palos Verdes school system. And my story really starts around 10 years old. I had a father and mother who were the most supportive people in the world. I was speaking to a police officer earlier. My dad was a judge at Torrance Superior Courthouse for 25 years. And my mother, a speech pathologist for 3 and 4-year-olds in the PV School District for 32 years. One day, my brother came home from junior lifeguards at Torrance Beach, told my dad that he had learned how to surf, and it was all about surfing. And this was the most unexpected, unannounced sport yet, because we had been playing football, baseball, basketball, soccer, you name it. My dad had never played those sports, but he was the coach of all of them, to give you an idea of how lucky I got in a supportive parent role. So I looked at my dad, because at that time, as a younger brother, everything in life was how do I beat him at everything? And I had miserably failed up until that moment. So I was like, well, maybe this surfing thing will be it. So I said, "Dad, please take me to Torrance Beach, and I want to be a surfer too." And he said, "Sure," like he said to everything. We went down to Torrance. I rode one of those one-second terrible Torrance Beach waves. And I've done a lot of traveling since, and I can still say, I think it is the worst wave in the world. But I love it more than anything, and I owe a lot to that beach. But I got that one wave, and something clicked within me, and it was what was going to determine the next 23 years of my life. At that moment, I realized what I wanted to do for the rest of my life. I mean, as a 10-year-old kid, I went, "Hang on, I don't just want to surf. I want to be a professional surfer." Like, how do I, how do we do this every day? How do I make money at this? How do I make this my life? I went to my parents and kind of gave them the speech, and they said, "Sure." So we started doing little local competitions. I picked up two sponsors two years later called Vulcan &amp; Body Glove at 12 years old, received my first paychecks, and my professional surf career began to happen very quickly. I took to the sport. The skills got more and more. We started traveling up and down the California coast. My parents were driving from Santa Cruz to San Diego every single weekend. And during that time, surfing was not a lucrative sport that parents were saying, "Go get 'em, kids." There was a lot of judgment and a lot of stigma about being a surfer, and my parents copped a lot of flack, but, you know, thankful to them, they let their kid go after his childhood dream. By the time I was in high school, I picked up more sponsors, one like Red Bull. I was doing national events. I was being sent around the world to compete as a World Junior, which is under 20-years-old. I was the captain of the USA Surf Team for the entire world of surfers under 20-years-old. And this was all while I was a senior in high school. There was a choice coming up, if I was going to pursue a professional surf career or go to college, and I was really banging at the door of, "I'm going to go and do this professional surf career." And I had all these big sponsors saying to my parents, "Hey, this kid has a chance. If you guys are still into it, like, we will support him all the way." And basically, the red carpet of me and my brother's little 10-year-old dream at Torrance Beach was rolled out in front of me. It was to join a tour that somebody like Kelly Slater, if that's a name that you can recognize, I was going on a tour that you could be crowned a world champion. And it was there. What brings me to why I stand in front of you today is that during that time as a senior in high school, my brother, Chris, who had a scholarship to Boise, Idaho for music, he still surfed, but he was really going to try to get into professional music. He came to our family and, to use the word unexpectedly again, told us that he had an issue with drugs, and in particular, that he had fallen into a drug called heroin. At 17-years-old, I had no idea what that meant, but I could see the fear in his eyes. And what the fear in his eyes showed me, in him being that bigger brother, the strongest, best person I knew, was that he was in fear of his own life. And we took it very seriously, that conversation. And over the next three or four months, it was all about Chris and putting him through detox and getting him into a sober living and going through the program of living with an addict, something that none of us were versed in, but we were becoming professionals at, because more than anything in the world, we wanted to see my brother again. You know, during that time, being around somebody that gets so heavily addicted, you lose the person. And I can honestly say, I lost my brother. I lost him to this drug that he just, was the only thing he wanted in life. And as I stand today, I start trembling, because I can always think back to that moment, and it's something that we couldn't control. No matter how much love and support, no matter what we said, at the end of the day, Chris was going to make a choice. With all that said, he did really well. He had six months sobriety. He had come out of a sober living home. He had gained our trust again, because when dealing with an addict, you lose all trust. You cannot trust the manipulation, and they're very good at getting what they want. But we got Chris back, and we thought everything was back to normal. I was the captain of the Peninsula High School Surf Team. It was towards the end of the year. We had our last surf team dinner, which was really a goodbye. Everybody was off to college. I was going after a surf career, and we had a beautiful evening. That night, driving home, my parents got a phone call that Chris was in an ambulance on his way to Torrance Memorial. And my parents dropped me off at the house, and I sat next to the phone. And it was a phone call that was going to go one of two ways. And when the phone rang, it was my mom in hysterics. And that night, February 3rd, 2004, we lost. Chris said, "He decided to use one more time." And unfortunately, it caught him. So 15-years later, I can barely hold myself trying to talk about it. But I hope it gives you guys an idea of how great of a person he was. I always like to bring a picture. This was my brother's senior year portrait. And I think that when you get to see what Chris looked like, it begins to hit home of, it's not bad things happen to bad people. Chris made a terrible choice, and it was a mistake, an accident, with the consequence that took his life. And he was a great person. The stigma about somebody who falls into substance abuse as a young child, to me, I had this vision, and it was not him. It was not this clean-cut, amazing person, loved by everybody, incredible brother, incredible son. But it was a good lesson for me at a young age, to understand that there are serious consequences to choices that, at that age, I didn't even understand. I mean, you can talk about being a teenager, and there's curiosity within all of us. I can say that I was young and dumb once. But we, as a family, we learned a lot since then. The hardest thing was the judgment, the whispers that were told about my parents, the woulda, coulda, shouldas, the guilt that came over me. What didn't I do enough of? What could I have done more? Where did we go wrong? It became very heavy, and now that I've grown older, I understand that I fell into a very deep depression, to the point where, I mean, thoughts came across me that I had wished it was me instead of him. I just thought that he was the better person out of the two of us. And getting into this really just terrible cycle of negative, dark thoughts, it drove me to paralysis. I sat at home. I didn't surf. I didn't go to school. For three weeks, I didn't go to school. Anything that was normal in my life completely stopped, and I didn't think that I was ever going to live life ever again. I didn't feel that I deserved to, and I honestly didn't even know how to move forward. To be the child and have to look at my parents, it was always this double punch, because I was feeling it, but then I had to look at them. And that's hard. It's hard to see your parents broken, but that's the reality of what this is. And for us to find acceptance, it was this far-off thing that I don't think, you know, me or my parents knew where to go. But something did happen, and thankful for their support, they took me to one of those events that we'd been going to every single weekend, because we needed to break the cycle of just being home, stuck, stuck with no answers, just stuck. And we went down to one of those events where my brother would have been sitting next to me. He was at every one of those contests, and for whatever reason, the biggest and best choice of my life happened that day. And I looked down where my brother physically was not, and I thought to myself, you know, what would Chris want me to do right now? Because the version of the life that I'm living is going to go in the exact opposite direction of anything that he had ever inspired me to do, of anything he'd ever taught me to do, of anything he'd ever fought people off so that I wouldn't fall into traps of life. I mean, I was about to probably go down the worst road possible because of the pain and struggle that I was going through. But I finally picked myself up and said, "You know what? Chris would want me to live, and if he was sitting here right now, he'd tell me to go win this contest." And acceptance came over that Chris was never going to come back, but I was going to have a choice to honor his life, and I was going to have a choice to say thank you for all of the gifts of the 20 years that he was on this world, the 17 that I got to have with him. And that moment in my life pushed me into a 22-year surfing career. I mean, it took me to places that I never dreamed of. I don't think he ever did. I'm sure he still laughs at some of the stuff that's gone on. But I did realize the power of choice, and I know that everybody in this room has a story. Ours is, you know, it's severe, and I think it's easy to talk about, and people go, "Wow, that is terrible." Now I like to take the label out of it, because I believe there are so many people struggling. And being in front of you as parents, I know that right now, a lot of young adolescents are struggling more than any of us can imagine. And while being on this speaking tour, the things that have been said to me, to my face, or through a direct message on Instagram or an email, are obviously shocking, but sad overall. I feel that it's almost unfair right now, what young adults are having to grow up with. So we're here for vaping prevention. My brother died of an opioid overdose, and from the time that he died, it's now the number one killer in America. That's a national crisis. 135 people a day die from opioid overdose. When Chris passed away 15-years ago, it was a shock. Never in a million years do we think it would go to where it goes today, and I just stand in front of people fighting, because I don't want anybody to go through what I went. And I don't want anybody to get stuck in that place of making a choice in life that could literally end your life. So we bring up this vaping prevention, and it's probably as adults, we almost laugh, because they're marketing it as a harmless device. But right now, our death toll in America is 49. 49 people have died from vaping. They market it as a substitute, something better than cigarettes. Well, there's now 2,200 lung injuries, which we have a doctor here tonight that will go into that further for you. I'm getting all of this from our CDC. I check it. They update it every Thursday. I think it's once a week. And since I started doing this tour a month ago, the death toll was 19. A month later, it's 49. And if we look at that math, and let's move a year forward, we have a serious issue on our hands. And it is not harmless, and it is not a better substitute. A vape device, I think it's around 200 puffs, is the same as a carton of cigarettes. Young children, young adults, think that these vape devices do not have nicotine in them. They literally think that it is this vape device, that they're just blowing, I don't know what. But these people are so good at recycling an issue that killed my grandparents. My grandparents died of lung cancer. We had tobacco use, and I lost three of my grandparents. This is the same issue recycled, but they've hidden it, and they've hidden it in flavors, right? Like cotton candy, although I believe menthol was just banned. So we're starting to go in the right direction. But they've marketed what killed people 40-years ago now to 10-year-old kids. And when I have to sit and speak to 5th graders, literally sitting on a step, sitting in front of 80 5th graders, and I go, "Who knows what vaping is?" And every single one of them raises their hands. That's when the reality hits. And I look at these high school kids and go, "Hey, just so you know, there's 5th-grade kids that look up to you, and they're watching everything that you do. So let's wake up here, and let's learn the facts." I'm sure you're going to get facts from a bunch of different people here, but there's two versions. There's nicotine and THC. Nicotine, I believe, and I don't know if it's still considered, is the most addictive drug in the world, right? That's what you get in the cartridge, and these are oils that they're smoking. A big thing that has come out is vitamin E acetate. It's, they're using it as a thickening agent within the oil, and we can put it on our skins and ingest it, and it's fine, but when it's turned into a vapor, it causes lung injury. They found that across the board in nicotine and THC. THC, the psychoactive component of marijuana, also an oil. Today, just for fun, I shouldn't say fun, because none of this is fun, but this is what I do. I just started looking up, because people are going, "Well, how is my son, how is my daughter getting this device?" The easiest way is going to a local store, where just like they'll sell alcohol to underage kids, they will sell these vape devices to any age kid. And the kids know exactly which ones do it. Now, here's the kicker, and I didn't believe this, but I was told you can go online, and they do not monitor it, they do not regulate it, they don't do anything. Because I'm like, well, there must be a way to check age, right? You have to be 21. So I went to whatever it was, how do you buy a vape? And it took me to weed-something-something.com. And I went and purchased, I didn't purchase it, I went to purchase a THC vape. Nothing came up. It never asked me how old I was. And then on top of it, it's like, "Would you like to read our privacy clause?" I said, "I'd love to read that." Clicked on that, and it explained how, when they ship this, they vacuum-seal it so you can't smell it, and then they either put it in a Jiffy Pop, like a popcorn bag, or a US Postal carton, so that when it shows up to your house, right? Because young kids are worried, "Well, what if my parents get this?" You guys would have no idea that there is a vape device inside of there. And this is going on, on the internet. And I was blown away. I was like, "Wow, we are at the forefront of something that needs to be regulated that currently is not. So how do we educate and get to the kids of how severe and how far this could take your life in a direction that you could never imagine?" So what I've been trying to do, speaking at the schools to your kids and students, is be a vehicle of relatability. You know, I am a bystander of somebody that died from a choice that I don't think they ever thought was going to take them that far. But can we educate, and can we bring awareness, and can we prevent, is the best word, before it even gets started? And so I keep asking these young kids, "Why?" And the first thing that comes up is, "Well, I have anxiety." And I said, "That's your answer. You have anxiety." "I have anxiety, so I vape, and it makes my anxiety better, and I can focus and do my homework." I'm like, "Hang on. We need to talk about mental health within this whole thing, because I have anxiety, I have depression, I have stress. Every single person in this room can relate to every one of those emotions." So I sit and look at these kids in the eyes and go, "Is that what you need to hear right now? Because you should look at my fingernails, and you can see that I have anxiety. But you need to understand that there is no quick fix to life." I think all of us as humans want the easy way out, but that is not what we are built for. We are built for adversity. We are built for those moments of being lost in life, experiencing an unexpected loss or tragedy, loneliness, isolation, depression, all of these things that if we can stand and face ourselves, when it happens again, which it will, it's life, this whole thing cycles, as we know, as we get older, we thought that it was going to be easier, it just keeps coming back. But we've learned how to deal with it. We have the coping skills now. We've done the self-homework. Young adults are looking at social media, and they're looking at people who they have no idea if that's even who that is. I don't believe we were ever meant to have the choice in life to choose who we are. Social media is, you can wake up in the morning, pick whatever thing you want as your picture, typically the best you've ever looked, right? Because nobody's posting, "God, I look like crap today." Although that would be refreshing. And then you can sit there and manicure your comment for the day. That's new. When I grew up, I had to look adults in the eyes. I had to approach them. I had to shake your hand. I had to introduce myself, and that was a sign of respect. That's lost right now. A lot of what is normal communication is lost, and you can see it when you try to talk to young adults. And I feel for parents right now, because I don't know exactly how you get this across. But I think how we do is coming from every angle possible, whether it be me or you, a local policeman, your counselor, your principal. It needs to be, it needs to come from every angle. That's just how we can start doing this. And I try to, you know, with young adults, like, and say, "You know, what do you like to do in life?" And they kind of sit there. I was like, "No, seriously, let's talk about this. What is it that you want more than anything in life?" And we go, and I'm like, "The point of this conversation is a goal." I believe, especially at a young age, when we still don't understand who we are or how to categorize all of our thoughts to make us the best human that we can be, if you're a goal-oriented, you're right on the right track to being what I call unstoppable. How do we get kids to be goal-oriented? And within goal-oriented, what that's doing is invoking individuality. It's taking the sheep, the robots, everything that's just being followed right now, and separate yourself and understand that it's okay, number one, to not be okay. All of these emotions we talked about, that's fine. In fact, you can use those to be a better person. But that takes work. That's why I say there is, there's no substance, there's no pill, there's no magic formula where any of this goes away. It's just how we start learning how to deal with it. So what's your goal in life, and how do we start it right now? And when you get into that mode, start understanding the pitfalls of life, such as a vaping device that is literally going to do nothing other than harm you to get to there. There's so many things in life that we can avoid if we simply have the courage and guts to be ourselves. For me, the scariest thing in life is facing myself. It's always been the hardest thing. To sit alone and face myself has been my hardest thing in life. But there needs to be a change, and young kids and adults have more power than we even know. They know it. But can we collectively get them to band together to be the change, to not be this following herd? But go out and be opinionated. Speak your voice. Stand up for yourself, number one. Stand up for what you believe in. Stand up in your opinions. But then can you do the work to be yourself to the point to help someone else? Can you finally be that person that when you see something wrong happening, go and stand up for somebody else? It's not going on right now. You know, people are just mindlessly going through day to day, and, you know, we have bullying in schools. We have some terrible things going on that I just want to encourage kids to know that they have the choice and the right to do what's right. And I don't know if that's been forgotten or whatnot, but it's just a reminder that we, as individuals, are powerful, and it's where change is made. And I would love to see change made in this vape prevention, because it's scary to think where this could go. And we're obviously sitting, having conferences with parents, students, it's all across the board. I tell the students, young adults, kids, some of my favorite ways of coping skills are, number one, a conversation. Nobody talks anymore. But nobody talks anymore with their armor off, right? Ask kids, you know, "Who are your friends?" "I don't know." "No, but who are your friends that you can sit and say anything to? You can, on that day, or it's one of those days, that you can sit with your friend and divulge to them everything, in confidence, knowing that that person is not going to go, walk away, and tell somebody about your conversation, begin rumors." That's the biggest scene of vulnerability I think that I've been scared of facing is, "Well, what happens after? If I am truthful to somebody and I expose my weaknesses, what's that person going to do with it to harm me because I did that?" That's how I grew up as a young boy. As a young teenager, as a male, I think you're supposed to be cool and strong, and I wasn't emotional during my brother's death. I never faced it emotionally, because I was not allowed to do that. I had to be the example that everything is okay. I did enough self-harm to the point that I don't even cry anymore. I taught myself how to not cry anymore, so that people would look at me, and they could come and approach me, and I wasn't going to break down, because what was really going on inside was so much more than people could ever imagine. But I didn't trust them, to allow them into my life, to hear what was really going on. That was my choice. Now what I do in front of your students, thousands of people, I think it's 24,000 kids that I've talked to, I vulnerably take my armor off and sit in front of strangers between 11 and 17-years-old, and do what is the scariest place inside of me, because I want to help them. And I look at these kids and say, "Listen, if I can do it, you can do it. But do not be me. Do not do this on your own." The biggest mistake I ever did in life was egotistically go through this and say, "I got this. I got this all on my own. I don't need help." The word "help" was a sign of weakness to me. My God, you know what's amazing, is when you actually allow people to help you. Life becomes so much easier. And when you can in return help somebody else, that's life. And if I could have learned that at a young age... And if I could have learned that at a young age, God, my life would have been so much easier. So I want to push kids to not need every friend in the world, but to have a handful of friends that are there when it's the bad day. Everybody's around when it's good. Everybody was there when I was winning contests or there was a party because of this or that. They weren't around when Chris died. No one was there. You need people to lift you up during those times that, again, are going to come back. And why can't we start doing it at a young age? You know, hold your friends dear and close to you. If you can't conversate within a friend, I always recommend to anybody, writing is another fantastic thing. If you're too afraid to expose yourself by talking, you can one-on-one with a pen and piece of paper, get all your crazy thoughts out of your head, onto the paper, and you can walk away. Or you can have the guts to come back and start learning your thought pattern, learning your cycle, and weeding out those negative thoughts that I go to before I ever go positive. I put myself down before I lift myself up. It's how I've always gone through life, personally and in my SERF career. And if I had learned the ability of how to start pushing away what are just thoughtless, negative things that did nothing but harm me, I wish I knew how to do that. Journaling is an awesome place for that. And then finally, and we've talked about already, what is your passion? What makes your heart sing? What makes you get up every day and want to do more, work harder, be better? Be a great son? Be grateful for your parents? Be thankful for your friends? We are capable as humans to do anything we want in life. I got extremely lucky with parental support. Not every child gets that and I'm very sensitive to that. Everybody has different ways of going through life, but I still, at the end of the day, do believe that hard work will overcome anything. And if you believe in it and are willing to face people's judgments, people's beliefs, sacrifice what is not normal, to do what is you, I think that's life. And I was given the gift of that from so many people. And now I'm at a point in my life where it's nice to be able to try to explain how to do this in a way to help others. So there's a lot going on. And there's a lot of questions of, again, why with this vaping? I think we're ahead of our time. And it's just now really being focused on, but it has to be addressed. And schools like the Torrance Unified School District are doing it. Not every district is willing to even face this. There is a stigma, right? That, oh, it's not our kids. Oh, it's not our school. We gotta let all that go. Because it is. And it's not your kid, it's not your school. It's just what's going on right now. And if we can come from a non-judgmental place and allow young adults to go through this phase without pointing fingers on them and blaming or shaming, whatever it is, and give them at least the ability to talk about it, to come to you with open arms, especially as a parent, for them to be able to come and talk to you first. I think that this issue should be solved at home first, if it can. If it can't, can the kid come to school and talk to a counselor? That's why they're on this campus. If it's not a counselor and if their friends aren't available, you know, go see a therapist. Whatever it is to solve this problem, because for me, the end game is finally losing a person. And we can't let this beginning step right now that is so unanswered be one of those new platforms that is gonna be an epidemic that in 15 years, somebody like me is standing up here going, hundreds of thousands of people have died from this. So I stand here today and I'm willing to speak to your kids, to the students of this district, vulnerably, at a place that I never wanted to address in the hopes of saving a life. And I'll never know who I actually get to, and that's not the point of this, but it's what we're meant to do as humans. And I can think back at times in my life and my career where I was just so focused on this microscopic thing of being the best surfer in the world. And that was great and all, but I don't think I've ever felt more whole as a person right now than being able to have opportunities like this to speak to young kids and allow them to know that I'm not perfect. I was never perfect. Nobody's perfect. We are all full of flaws and mistakes and that is what makes us human. And that is great. Do not be afraid of them. It's all just a learning lesson at the end of the day, right? And I think we put ourselves down and are so hard on ourselves when we make those mistakes that we don't allow ourselves to pick ourselves back up and live again. Put your head up in the air and go, okay, I blew it, but that's okay. I can make it into the next day. I don't need to grab that thing. I don't need to take that and use this to cope for that moment. It's okay. And I just want to see, especially young adults, live a full life that is their version of it. So that's what I'm doing within all of these speaking tours. I think we're gonna have a panel after this where I can answer questions. It's always much different coming from the parents than it is the students. I would love to hear from you guys. I also have a whole list of resources which they do out there. I've been working with tons of sober living homes, substance abuse programs. One place that you guys should know, because there are not any centers right now taking vaping addicts. It's real. I called four of them today. Trying to find one for you as parents, I found one. So Thelma McMillan in Torrance will take a vape addict. Others are not there yet. They think it's too small of an issue. Clear Recovery Center will take a vape addict, but it has to come with a mental health issue. And so when I called these four centers today, I lied and said I was a parent and my son has an issue, I felt for all of you. Because I don't know if there is a parent in here with a kid with an issue, but I've worked with you. There's two students that I've worked with that were sent to boarding schools for the last two years because of their vape addiction. And now they're trying to reintegrate themselves to South Bay schools. But think about how hard that is. Now, as a senior in high school, to reintegrate yourself with all of everybody knowing what you had to be sent away for? They don't have anywhere to go. They don't have anybody to talk to. And it's like, oh, my God. There's so much work to be done. So let's start small. But let's offer it. And let's be the change in the availability to allow these young adults to undo their mistakes. Right? No mistake was ever big enough that it should take someone's life. No mistake was ever big enough that it deserved judgment to the point that they were pushed out, isolated. You know, isolation is the worst feeling that you could ever do to somebody. That's where it gets worse. You know, let's be there for them. And if I can help in any way, as I continue to learn and I'll learn more tonight, please let me know. Because we live in the best community in the world. During that time, as my SERF career, I was going to 28 countries a year, traveling nine months out of the year to all these incredible places. I came home and bought a house in Torrance. Because I recognize the tightness of this community and I recognize how much people actually care for each other. And that's what tonight's about. It's about compassion. Compassion is such a beautiful word. And we collectively can do that. So thank you guys very much.
Can we give Alex another round of applause? And thank him for coming and sharing. I don't think it's easy to tell, to tell that story. I also want to thank our mayor, Pat Fury, and his wife, Teri, for coming this evening. So thank you very much. And want to introduce you now to what I've called the 4-1-1 part of our evening, our expert, Jen Harris from Behavioral Health Services, who is going to move on to our next part of our meeting. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you, thank you. Can we give Dr. Crumpy a hand, please? So as Dr. Crumpy mentioned, my name is Jen Harris with Behavioral Health Services. And I am, oh, we have some hand waves in the back. Hi. So we're gonna talk about vaping and also talk about marijuana. There is going to be a brief video shown as well, so it'll add some context to what we're talking about. And then we'll have an opportunity to have a panel in a bit with some amazing speakers. So briefly, Behavioral Health Services, we are an organization that provides both treatment and prevention services. We also provide mental health services. We have several locations throughout LA County. We provide anger management, domestic violence classes as well. We have family preservation. We partner with DCFS and local law enforcement. So that way, we can get folks the treatment that they need. I appreciate Alex talking about the treatment options in regards to vaping nicotine. One of the challenges we're finding within the county, or folks who are being funded by the county, is that there isn't funding specific from the county to focus on nicotine. So with tobacco cessation, there are different programs that will be able to help you with 1-800-lines and things like that. But unfortunately, we aren't seeing that for nicotine. So we're appreciative for Thelma McMillan to be able to provide nicotine treatment, especially for our young people, because we are seeing some trends which we'll talk about. Additionally, with South Bay Prevention, we do provide different programs here within Torrance Unified. And so we have the opportunity to work with a lot of your students to do some prevention and early intervention programs and also provide some drug-free information and things like that. So thank you very much. So one of the things with e-cigarettes or electronic cigarettes, as you may have heard, there is this trend that is taking place. And unfortunately, we're seeing it a lot with young people. So with this particular fact, the CDC talks about e-cigarettes and how they're the most commonly used tobacco product amongst young people in the United States. So previously, it used to be traditional cigarettes, but now we're finding more and more young people who are focusing on vaping nicotine products as opposed to traditional cigarettes. I believe the national statistic is 2% of those young people who've reported using traditional cigarettes. And then additionally, nine out of 10 adult smokers began smoking cigarettes before the age of 18. So traditional tobacco cigarettes, they began smoking before the age of 18. Unfortunately, a lot of people don't realize that your brain is not fully developed until you're 25. So we may have laws that say, as long as you're 21, then it's okay for you to purchase. But if your brain is not fully developed, then what are these chemicals in these products that you're using doing to your brain? Once someone is addicted to nicotine, it is very hard to quit. It is extremely hard to quit. And the video will actually talk about nicotine and its addictive nature. Nicotine is one of the most heavily used addictive drugs in the United States. And for a user, someone who chooses to use nicotine, it rewires the brain. And unfortunately, the user begins to crave nicotine more and more. So we're gonna watch this video that talks about electronic cigarettes and vaping.
People have been smoking for at least 7,000 years. But it wasn't until the 1800s that cigarettes became the smoke of choice, after machines were developed to mass produce them. 200 years later, in 2003, the electronic cigarette was invented in China. And since then, the use of e-cigarettes, also called vaping, has grown exponentially around the world. E-cigarettes are electronic devices that vaporize a flavored liquid. They all used to look like cigarettes, but now they come in many shapes and sizes. Many look like pens or small boxes called mods. What they all have in common is, one, a power source, usually a lithium battery. Two, an atomizer, which heats the e-liquid. Three, e-liquid or e-juice, which usually contains flavors in nicotine. And four, a cartridge or tank which is filled with e-liquid. Heating the e-liquid creates a cloud of vapor that looks like smoke, but without a lot of the lethal components contained in tobacco smoke. Many people assume e-cigarettes are safer than traditional cigarettes because they don't burn anything or create tar in your lungs. But it took almost 7,000 years for humans to realize that tobacco causes lung cancer, throat and mouth cancer, causes heart attacks and strokes, and damages the lungs. E-cigs, meanwhile, have only been around a little over a decade, so there just hasn't been enough time to figure out what effects they'll have on your body. We do know that e-cigarettes deliver nicotine, just like the traditional cigarettes, causing increased heart rate and blood pressure. Nicotine also has powerful effects on the brain. It releases rewarding neurotransmitters in the brain, like dopamine, and changes brain chemistry. It is a stimulant, making people feel more alert. But when it goes away, people crave it even more. It can interfere with the body's own natural ability to make dopamine. And soon, the user needs nicotine just to feel normal. The developing brain of teenagers is the most vulnerable to these effects. The powerful addictive nature of nicotine is so high that it's comparable to heroin and cocaine. Besides nicotine, e-cigarettes contain chemical solvents. When heated very high by some of the new e-cigarette devices, these solvents can be transformed into formaldehyde, which is a carcinogen. It causes cancer. These observations are concerning, but we really do not know what the long-term effects from inhaling these chemicals in your lungs will be. E-cigs contain many other chemicals to generate enticing flavors. In fact, there are almost 8,000 different flavors available today. So we don't know very much about many of them. We do know that some of the butter flavorings contain diacetyl, which is famous for causing popcorn lung. Popcorn lung is a disease called bronchiolitis obliterans, which is basically an irreversible scarring and destruction of the delicate lung tissue that can kill you. Strawberry and other healthy sounding fruit flavors have been found to be cytotoxic and potentially cancer-causing as well. Vaping devices, or specifically the lithium batteries inside them, may explode unpredictably. Although uncommon, this happens frequently enough that e-cigarettes have been banned from luggage on airplanes. Unpredictable explosions have occurred in people's faces and mouths and resulted in serious injuries, including blindness. With these potential risks of e-cigarettes, the addictive nicotine, the exploding batteries, the carcinogenic liquids, why would any company want you to use them? Sales of e-cigarettes approach $8 billion per year and are increasing. The truth is, tobacco cigarettes kill about 50% of people who use them. So tobacco companies, known as Big Tobacco, need to keep recruiting young people to become addicted in order to stay in business. Here are some actual documented quotes from tobacco executives. "We don't smoke that [BLEEP], we just sell it." "We reserve the right to smoke for the young, the poor, and the stupid." "The base of our business is the high school student." "The fragile self-image of the young person needs all the support it can get." "Smoking may appear to enhance that self-image." "Studies show that when people start to smoke in their teens, they become addicted and stay smokers as they grow older, even those who swear they will never become addicted." "Many of the same strategies that Big Tobacco used to hook your grandparents into smoking tobacco cigarettes have simply been modified and are being used today with an e-cig in place of a tobacco cig." "E-cigarettes come in candy and dessert flavors like Skittles, gummy bears, and vanilla cupcake, directly aimed at teens." "Ads always show thin, beautiful people vaping. Even the strategic use of humor is being successfully used to get customers on their side." "The bottom line is that we are all faced with important personal choices every day. We don't yet know everything we need to know to make informed decisions about many things. But we can resist being manipulated. Take your time in making your own personal decisions. It can make all the difference."
All right, so the video talked about a lot of different things. It compared nicotine, the addictive nature of nicotine, to both heroin and cocaine. A lot of times when we think about someone who uses heroin or cocaine, we don't think about nicotine. No, not me. I would never do that. But a lot of times, we won't hear someone say that when it comes to nicotine. And so with this video, I love that it talks about a lot of different things. It talks about the addictive nature. It talks about the different types of flavors. One of the things that the video mentioned, when they created this, there were over 8,000 flavors, which is what the video said. We now have reports that there are over 18,000 flavors. So you think about the number of flavors that are out there for young people to be able to get their hands on, whether it's cotton candy or Skittles or Captain Crunch or whatever it is. There are a lot of flavors that are there. One of the reasons why we discourage use, especially for young people, is because of the effects on the brain. Nicotine has a way of rewiring your brain. And so we don't think about that. But I already mentioned that the brain is not fully developed until you're 25. So you think about... So, you think about a young brain and someone who decides that they want to use nicotine. Well, unfortunately, there have been a lot of harmful effects, some of which can be mood disorders, causing anxiety. So, Alex mentioned young people who say, "Well, I have anxiety," or "I have depression." But what they aren't realizing is that these products will actually interfere and rewire your brain. So, though you think it may be treating your anxiety and your depression, unfortunately, it's not. Also, we've been seeing a lot of irritability and hearing about young people who will ask to go to the restroom frequently because they need to vape. They have to get that next hit or feel that buzz. And so, we're seeing a lot of permanent damage that is taking place with the teenage brain. Additionally, the rate of young people who have reported using has drastically increased. So, though we've been seeing a lot of young people who have self-identified and said, "Yes, I am vaping," we believe that it's possible that there are more young people who have not disclosed that they're vaping, and so these numbers may in fact be higher. So, 1 in 4 high school students, 1 in 14 middle school students in the United States reporting that they used any tobacco product in 2018. Something that a lot of people don't know, vaping products and vape devices are actually an aerosol. So, it's not vapor, it's not water, it's not gas, but it's actually an aerosol. So, think about it. The types of aerosols that you may be familiar with: pledge cleaning spray, Lysol, hairspray, Axe deodorant, certain types of perfumes or colognes. These are aerosols. So, if I take some hairspray and I spray it on my hair, the product is going on my hair, but there are also particles that are falling around me. So, if you notice when you spray your hair, there are particles that are falling around you. This is essentially what's happening with these vaping devices. So, people are vaping using these devices, and there are particles that are falling on their lungs. So, when you talk about the numbers that the CDC has reported with folks who've been infected or reporting symptoms, it's because of what these products are doing and the chemicals that are in them. So, it is an aerosol, and I mentioned the droplets or the particles that are being left behind, so not just in someone's lung, but also around them. That's why they're looking into secondhand smoke with vaping, because we're seeing more and more incidents of folks who are being affected. So, we wanted to make sure, since we're talking about what the 411 is, we want to also cover products. We want you to be able to recognize the products and not just some of the effects that are out there. So, these are some of the products that are out there. We had a table that was graciously provided with lots of different devices that have currently been confiscated. There are some other devices that you may or may not have seen. So, if you look up here, the green and purple one is actually considered a mod or a larger device. We aren't typically seeing that with a lot of young people, but we are seeing some of the smaller ones that look like USB drives. Juul is a pretty popular brand, but I do want you to know that we're hearing more and more young people in the South Bay say that Soren is the popular brand for them. I see some nods, so, yes. We'll also show some of those pictures as well. And so, with these devices, one of the things that young people are reporting is that they prefer the Soren brand because it's less expensive. So, it's inexpensive in comparison to how much it would cost for them to purchase a Juul device. Nationally, Juul is the number-one reported brand for young people, but in the South Bay, we're seeing Soren. So, something that I want to point out with Soren on their website, these are some screenshots. And if you look at this shot right here, it says, "Warning: This product contains nicotine. Nicotine is an addictive chemical." So, this is what they have on their website. "Warning: This product contains nicotine. Nicotine is an addictive chemical." They're telling you, this product that they're selling contains nicotine, and nicotine is an addictive chemical. So, if you use Soren brand product, or if you use a Juul brand product, "Warning: This product contains nicotine. Nicotine is an addictive chemical." So, it's very important to know that. And then, we see some of the wraps that are there. So, you can actually get your Juul or your different vaping device with a wrap that you'd prefer. You can put llamas on it. It can look like Gucci. It can look like Marlboro cigarettes. You can even have it look similar to NASCAR and say, "Drive fast." There are also magazine articles in different sites, like High Times, that will tell you how you can gel-break it, and you can put THC in it. And Alex did mention THC, which I'm appreciative of. THC is the active ingredient in marijuana that makes you high. So, that's important. If you hear me say THC, or someone else say THC, it is the active ingredient in marijuana that makes you high. Some other types of vaping devices. This is a Soren brand right here. So, this is a drop. Additionally, this is a Soren brand right here at the top, and so it may look like a little cartridge. I had a student that I caught on one of the middle school campuses two years ago that said it was his charger for his phone. They also have other types of devices that you can customize: Altoids cans, Coca-Cola cans, Nintendo controllers. You can even look up products specifically to girls, and they can be be-Juled. You can also have other types of wraps, and would you be able to tell that that wasn't lipstick? No, right? So, how do you know if your young person has one of these products? There are also watches, looks just like an Apple Watch. You remove the face, you vape out of it, and you put it back. There are also some that look like inhalers. There are some that look like key fobs. So, who are we marketing to with these types of products? Soren, some of their language. "It's perfect if you are a shy one, or you are looking for a stealth mod without attracting attention. This layout suggestion gives you the capacity to showcase your apparatus amongst your enthusiast friends, or even tuck it away as soon as the need for discretion arises." When does the need for discretion arise? Right, you walk into the door. I guess so. But for an adult, though, if we're marketing to adults, when does the need for discretion arise? Is it because you're doing it in church? Are you sitting at your desk at work? You know, when does this need arise? Additionally, we wanted to inform you about vaporware. LA Times did an article on September 23rd, full layout, talking about vaporware. They have articles of clothing that are specific to vaping, so you can purchase these clothes and you can actually vape out of them. They also have camel packs, and they also have backpacks. So, as a teacher, if I have one of these backpacks, how would I know? If a student had one of these, how would they know? You can also purchase the strings by themselves. So, some of the language they use, make it discreet, because what you vape and when you choose to do so is nobody's business. Who are we marketing to? So, as a young person, when I see this, what is this telling me? So, we wanted to also talk about marijuana. 1 in 11 of those who use marijuana will become addicted, but 1 in 6 of those who begin in their teens will become addicted. You are able to vape marijuana. We've also been hearing about folks in our treatment sites vaping meth. There is a way for you to also vape alcohol. I went to a conference in San Diego recently, and during the conference, there was a medical director from one of the hospitals in San Diego, said that there have been a lot of young people going in drunk, but not drunk because of traditional alcohol, drunk because they've been putting vanilla extract, pure vanilla extract, in their vaping devices and vaping it. Right. And around this time of year, this is when the most pure vanilla extract is sold. So, it's something to be mindful of. Marijuana can also affect the brain. It can slow down your motor skills. It can cause memory loss. Additionally, some devices that you should know about. If you hear the word cereal carts or carts, they look like this. With a vaping device for marijuana, you may hear wax pen, or wax, or dab. So, this particular pin right here, you see it has a honey colorish type of liquid in it. That is the extracted THC. Pax is a brand that is specific to marijuana vaping, and with this brand, you can customize your experience. So, the potency of THC that I want, so how high do I want to be? The flavor that I want? How much vapor do I want? And additionally, I can use my phone and have an app for it. With it, it looks similar to a Juul, but the thing I need you to realize is this logo right here. So, that's the thing you have to recognize, because it may look similar to other vaping devices, but this particular one has marijuana in it. So, if you see it, this is a sign that it contains marijuana or THC. J-pods, you can actually purchase them, so you don't even have to use an article that shows you how to gel-break it. You can actually purchase the pods with marijuana in them. And then, these are some wax pens, so you may see some of the wrappers. There are also a lot of people who are selling synthetic wax pens and wax devices, and they're able to purchase these wrappings for it, and they're selling their own. And so, is it just a dance? We have the Mona Lisa dabbing. We have Squidward, Paul Ryan, Cam Newton, Betty White. So, a lot of times, people will say, "Oh, that's so cute. Look at Johnny. Oh, my gosh." But unfortunately, they don't realize that the dab is not just a dance. So, journalist Damon Sloan actually did an article, and he wrote, "Dabbing is the purest form of marijuana. When you start to cough, you put your arm to your mouth to cover it when you are exhaling the smoke. Thus, the dab motion is born, and the dance becomes a big hit." So, sometimes, we, as parents, we think, "Oh, wow, that's so cute," or "Look at this trend," but we don't know the meaning behind it. So, dabbing is not just a dance. It's actually a form of marijuana use, and it's important that we're educated about it. Dabbing and using wax pens is a huge concern, because it leads to addiction quickly. Additionally, one puff of a dabber wax is equal to 10 puffs of traditional marijuana. One puff of a dabber wax, because of the high levels of THC in it, quickly leading someone to addiction. The CDC, this has not been updated, but Alex did mention some of the numbers, and so I wanted to make sure I wrote them down. So, 2,290 cases have been reported. 2,290 cases have been reported in 49 states. There have been 47 deaths in a total of 25 states. So, this is an epidemic, and it's something that's happening tremendously, that needs to be looked at even further. The CDC is also recommending folks not use any THC vaping products, not use any nicotine vaping products, that if you are using any of those products, don't turn back to traditional cigarettes, that find other means to be able to stop, like using patches or going, seeing a doctor, so they can prescribe you medication, so then that way you can quit. Some of the ways to identify use and concealment, we would like for you all to recognize the product type. That's why we show so many different types. Additionally, recognizing a faint sweet smell, impairment or other noticeable health effects, blowing shirt, smoke in their shirts or in their arms. And then additionally, if it looks like honey in whatever the device is, it more than likely is marijuana. And then also, you can notice some other things, like bloodshot eyes, dry mouth, things like that. Additionally, if you're finding things that look like flash drives, gel jars that may contain dabs, or some pods or cartridges, these are also things to look out for. There are a lot of videos that young people have put online, on YouTube, that specifically show how you can hide your vaping device from your parents. We were going to include some of those, but we figured, we let you all do some research on your own. But, they're specifically telling you, "My parent, your parent won't check up here," because they're not going to climb on your bed to go look and see what you have up there. Your parent's not going to recognize this, because they're going to think it is dry And then, call to action for all of you. Educate those that you know of on the dangers of vaping. You've been educated tonight, and we've actually only covered the surface. There is so much information out there, and there are so many websites for you to educate yourselves. Additionally, support policies that protect our communities and protect our young people around these issues. Bring us, my team, we can come out and do education for students, for parents, for faculty. We have faculty trainings that we do as well, or educating law enforcement, elected officials, because there are so many trends out there. And then, educating other parents on the dangers and harmful effects, identification and what they can do. And then, continue education for yourself. It's important that you continue to educate yourselves, because I always tell parents, would you prefer your child learn the correct information from you, or learn the wrong information from someone else? Your words speak louder than anyone else's, and you have to understand that you are the parent at the end of the day. You can also discuss healthy ways to stay away from drugs and alcohol. A lot of times, we don't provide options. We just say, "Don't do it." But what are some other things that they can do in order to fill that void, or to not do that, or to practice something healthy, like pursuing talents, or volunteering, or talking to someone for support, like Alex mentioned, or playing sports, or doing something else? And friends don't let friends vape. So, it's important that we encourage our young people that they can not only be a role model, but they can also advocate for their friends to not do it. And then, reminding them that they have a choice. We use this messaging a lot, because with behavioral change, it's about the choices that we're able to make. So, they have a choice. They also have a voice, so they can use their voice to say no. They can use their voice to encourage and uplift their friends and families to make the right decisions, and so it's important that we give them that choice. At BHS, we have, we provide youth services. We do not provide them for nicotine because of the funding aspect, but we do provide services for marijuana use, and that includes vaping marijuana, and also other things like underage drinking, heroin abuse, prescription drugs, anything like that. And then, we have a lot of resources in the bag, so on your way out, if you did not take handouts, please, 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 take handouts. And then, my contact information is listed here, so feel free to contact me. This is my cellphone number. You can text me. You can email me. You can call me if you have a question, or you just feel like you need to talk. We want to make sure the resource is there. And then, I also want to let you all know that we do have two additional town halls that will be coming up at the top of next year, so February 5th and March 18th. And I really, really, really want to encourage you to let other folks know. It's not about, "Well, my school is in this area, so I'm just going to go to the one that's by my school," but everyone needs to hear the information. Everyone. So, it's important that we're encouraging the other folks that we know. Even if they don't have a child that's in Torrance Unified, I want you to encourage them to come, because the information is relevant everywhere. And so, it's important that you all are getting education, and you all are providing the information to someone else. So, remember, the dates are February 5th and March 18th, and we will definitely remind you again. So, with that, I'm going to conclude my presentation, and we're actually going to move into our panel. So, if we can have our panelists come up, please, then I would appreciate that. And so, tonight, with our panel, we're actually going to have more of a conversation. And so, this will be an opportunity for the panelists to answer some questions. We reached out to parents, and we asked them for feedback. We reached out to parents and we asked them for feedback, um, with some of the questions, uh, some questions that they would like for the panelists to answer tonight. We actually have a ra- a wide variety of panelists that will be here tonight. And so we'll have an opportunity for you all to, uh, get to know more about what they're seeing around this issue. And so I want to first thank our panelists for being here. I'm actually going to take a seat. Uh, we'll have an opportunity to have a conversation and answer some questions. And then, um, we, when we conclude, we would like to take a photo afterwards. So if everyone could just like come in front of the table and, uh, will be great. Cool. So thank you all very much for coming. Uh, and so we have several different folks represented. Thank you. Let's turn this on. So we have several different folks represented tonight. Um, we have a student on our panel, Desiree Rodriguez. Thank you very much for coming. We also have a school official, a school official, excuse me, Andrew McCarty. Thank you. We have our wonderful, wonderful presenter tonight, Alex Gray. We have an emergency room doctor, uh, from Torrance Memorial, Dr. Hanson. We have a mental health therapist here, Rebecca Stevens. And for representing law enforcement, we have Officer Tatum. So what we'll do is, uh, since we're going to use that mic, we'll just, uh, go down the line. Uh, we'll have an opportunity for you all to give some feedback to parents. Uh, so then that way you can provide some words of encouragement, but also some things that they should know. And so we'll start with you, Alex. You did a great job tonight in talking about your brother and talking about some of the things that you share with the students for these schools that you're going to. So what would you tell a kid who is considering vaping or is already addicted to vaping?
Two different subjects.
Yes.
Uh, the considerations of vaping are obviously, I mean, going into your PowerPoint, educating, I think is a huge aspect, the awareness. Gosh, when I think back to being a young kid and mistakes that I made, had I have only known what they really were, it took me on kind of my own lesson. I'm walking a walk now where I try to vulnerably be honest to young children. I think that kids are smarter than we know, but coming from an honest, genuine place is when you can typically get them to truly listen. And when speaking to a kid, young adult, I don't know the politi- politically correct word here. Um, but in prevention is relatable stories. I have one, I'm more than happy to expose my vulnerability within it and just sit and tell the truth. And me as a role model, at least what I've tried to take on with my surf career, I have a choice. I have a platform, I have social media. My choice has been to understand that I have young children watching everything that I'm doing. And part of that is in a way of not specifically put directing this information at them, kind of subliminally driving people to make the bigger, better choice, which is usually the one that sits within ourselves. For me, it sits in my gut, it's that thing that people call butterflies. And I, I tell kids, I'm like, man, listen to that voice. Your inner voice is typically correct. And like you said, it's fight or flight. It is the voice to jump into something out of fear that makes you rise to an occasion, or it's what tells you to walk or run if it's just not for you. Uh, for anybody that's currently addicted, you know, it's okay. I, I can't go back to enough saying, hey, we make mistakes. And some have more severe consequences than other. My immediate response is please go get help. I hope that you can talk to your friend, but if it's not them, there are professionals here. I'm so glad you have a mental health therapist because you know more about the way to communicate with people that are struggling in a potentially very serious, harmful, self-harmful way than maybe me as a friend. So there are, there are multiple outlets. And again, it's everybody in this school, and I know it, I've spoken to your principals, your whatever. I mean, we just want to see young people be their best version. Please ask for help and please go for it. You know, being under 18, a parent does have the choice to force their children into a recovery center. And sometimes that's effective, sometimes it's not so effective. But know that once they turn 18, you are losing them to their own choice 100%. So as a parent, um, explore everything that you can to get your child help. But even more so in putting them in a recovery center, I'd love to let everybody know that it's okay to say anything that you want. You have the right to say everything, whether good or bad to your child because they need to hear it. And you may find regret in not saying that one thing, the moment that you finally lose them when you least expect it. So be honest and vulnerable to your child yourself too.
Well, thank you for that. You So I actually wanted to ask a follow-up question because you pointed out Rebecca, um, as a mental health therapist. Uh, and so I think that was really interesting because when we look at support systems, a lot of times people don't know like what the resources are, what types of support systems there are to combat addiction. But what are some other ones that you can offer to our audience?
Gosh, combating addiction, I mean, I loved your list. For me, it was surfing. My passion that is my career is what's also saved my life. For me and my own mental health journey, it is the place where I can go where there's nobody there to judge me, to tell me how to do it. It's a form of self-expression. One of your bullet points was art and art comes in many forms, but I think the idea is getting out of our head. Uh, we can be our own worst enemy in self-harm and in life. And what is that moment where it's that mindless clarity where you can just be? And that's why pursuing passion is so huge. And we also have so many resources around here professionally. But for me, I come from a non-professional place and I always have to do that because as I've gone through this journey exposing myself and being a vaping prevention advocate, I am a person. I do not have a doctorate, I don't have a PhD. And there comes a line where I have to pass on a, a, a patient or somebody who doesn't know they're about to be a patient to a mental health professional. And I think discerning the line of knowing when it is time, like you said, to be a voice and have an opinion and advocate for that person's help. We can save other people's lives too by, by telling someone else. And that's just as important as well. And I love that you brought that up.
Oh, thank you very much for that. And Rebecca, I'd like to talk to you. As a mental health therapist, you have a really tough job. I see a lot more visibility around mental health, but also too, uh, there are a lot of cultures that don't really talk about mental health, um, or don't understand the importance about seeking treatment. And so from a mental health perspective, what are some of the things that you're seeing regarding vaping?
Yeah, um, well, I, I see kind of two different avenues. Um, one is if, if we're talking about like why kids are vaping, one is like the social aspect of it. You know, it's become so widespread and, um, it's become a way to, you know, bond with their friends. You know, go to the bathroom and congregate and vape and talk or, um, you know, they're doing vape tricks and putting them on social media and then they're replicating them. So that's like the one aspect. And then the other one is, um, as what you had mentioned with the anxiety. I hear that all the time is like, you know, it, it helps me with my anxiety, specifically social anxiety. It helps put them at ease or they think it does. And you know, obviously the, the danger there is that they're, you know, they're not dealing with the underlying emotions and feelings, they're just kind of putting a Band-Aid on the situation. But yeah, those are the, the two main areas is like the social stuff and then the, the using it as a coping skill for the anxiety.
Wow, thank you for that. Yeah. So when we talk about the anxiety piece of things and we talk about, uh, socially, like some of these things that young people are coming to you for, what are some of the mental health risks for a young person who chooses to vape?
Well, uh, the one is obviously, I mean, the addiction to nicotine and how that can lead to, you know, youth trying other more dangerous, uh, even, um, well, I was going to say more addictive drugs, but we just clarified that nicotine is one of the most addictive. But so there's that, but I think the real risk is, uh, using vaping as an unhealthy coping mechanism. You know, instead of talking to people, either a professional or just, you know, friends and family, they're, uh, turning to vaping, um, and they're not addressing, you know, the underlying issues and the feelings, um, so I think that's a definite risk. And then obviously like if someone gets addicted, um, and they need, you know, nicotine just to feel normal. And then they can experience withdrawals and that can lead to all sorts of symptoms, anxiety, irritability, being unable to focus, so yeah.
So you mentioned talking to someone. So what are some, for the parents out here, like what are some mental health resources for students who may be vaping?
Um, well, I'm on campus, I'm there full-time. Um, they can come see me if I can't see them. And this is obviously for the school, but you know, there is a therapist at every Torrance High School now. Um, I think it's great that mental health is being, you know, put in the schools more often now. Um, so they can come to me, they can go to their counselor, um, you know, a teacher. Um, and they may refer to me if I can't help them myself, I can give them referrals, um, to, you know, people in the community or support groups. And you know, for more severe addiction, there's, you know, centers, inpatient, partial hospitalization, um, stuff like that. Um, I actually just read about, um, like a text-based program. I don't know if anyone else has heard about this, but it's called like This Is Quitting, where like you can text, um, you text like ditch jewel to 88709 and it starts like sending you messages and resources if you want to quit. So I thought that was interesting, that may be more accessible for teens. But I think the most important thing is just feeling like they can, um, they can admit that they need help and that they want to talk to someone.
Great, thank you. And I'm glad that you talked about the school piece because we have Andrew here. And I want to transition to you because I think it's important for us to talk about what's happening on our campuses. Because a lot of parents have been talking about the things that they've been hearing from their children or students who've been talking about things that have been happening on campuses. But from your perspective, what are the things that schools are doing, both middle schools and high schools to be able to address the issue?
You know, I think we've, uh, really began to look at it in terms of more of an education piece. And I think as we're talking up here about looking at the why the choice occurs as opposed to the action is wrong. You know, we have our traditional responses. You can have a Saturday school, you may be suspended. You can have time away from the learning environment, but those sorts of responses are familiar and known and they have not yet prevented choices being made. So, you know, i- i- in, in my time as dean, um, you know, seeing your pictures of the different type of vaporizers, we have them all and we have suspended and we have given you Saturday school and I've pulled you out, but it's still in use. So the question is, well, then how do I then prevent it? And so how do I then create an environment where students have relationships, where they have some credibility or identity for themselves? So they can make that choice. And we often say to a student, or I will that, you know, you do the right thing when no one's watching. But I think it's incredibly hard to make that right decision while I'm in the bathroom with my friends. You know, they, i- i- if we're looking at the increase of things, uh, there are more boys that go to the bathroom together and hang out than any other time. Well, because it's relational. Uh, if I pause a student at 7:30 in the morning and say, should a student use a vaporizer? No, they should not. They know the answer. Should a student, um, use a vaporizer on campus? No, they shouldn't use a vapor, vaporizer on campus. But then why at 10:15 are they? And there is a real pull for that identity. There's a real pull for a young adult to have a fit, have a place. So I think as, as, as we're looking at these instances come up, as we're trying to examine the whys and create an environment, um, a- as you spoke earlier, were, were these, the passions, the goals, the wants, that self that's constantly developing can be recognized, rewarded and have credibility? So you know, i- i- we also do things that are, we have a referral service as a consequence to the Thelma, Thelma Macmillan Center. And we've started putting, uh, you know, we, we have two of our displays out in the front. We have our posters around the, around the campus, you know? It might just be that when you have that at 10:15, it's snack time, we're going to go in the bathroom. Well, here's the display outside the door. It's a reminder of all the dangers of, all the chemicals, all the physical things that are going to occur to you. And, and, and maybe that's just one moment where what you already know can come to your front thinking and you can say, no, guys, I'll wait outside. But it is really, um, it's really hard. It's very seductive. You know, it's the electronic James Dean and you brought up photos and you showed athletes and we see performers and we have these images, um, and they're very seductive. And if you are 14, 15, 16, you're looking for that. You're trying to figure out and you're trying to negotiate from a, from a childhood to an adult. And, and that age of adolescence is, is so incredibly long now. And you know, you, everyone's brought up the brain development that it, it's hard. And so I think when we're responding to students, we're responding both in a preventive way, and in a consequence way. And in a consequence way, it is, yes, there are some things that are legal. You, you have THC on you, that is a violation of the law. You can be suspended, you can receive a ticket. But on the other end, there's still the, the why. And I, that's a tough battle. I don't know that I have the answers for that wholly, but I think that as we begin to examine the situation in this kind of new field of play for students, you know, just looking at our neighborhood, we have, and if you guys don't know in your community, uh, from North High School alone, there are three smoke shops within a half mile. There are two 7-Elevens that advertise right behind the counter, all the cigarettes, all the vaporizers that were shown. There's not an escape from it. And if I'm just alone going to say, thou shalt not use a vaporizer or else you get suspension, I'm powerless, it can't happen. And as a parent, i- if, if you believe that I've said no and it's enough, then it's not. And, and it has to be, you know, our, our students, our children are far more persistent than we are. We're going to say, no, don't do it. I've talked to you, you're grounded for the weekend, I took your phone. Ooh, I solved that one. But I got to do it again and I got to do it again. And the, I think the hard pe- hard piece, I think as for the educator, for the parent, and I have three boys of my own and man, I was called to their school for instance. And I think my kids are great. But I have to be more persistent. I have to involve myself, as you were suggesting, in their lives. Not only as a confidant, but as this is what's going to happen now, it will happen the next time. It will happen again and it'll happen again. So they know that when they do venture out and a mistake is made, that they can come back to a place that will hold them accountable and treat them for who I want them to become, not just opposed to who they are at that moment. And so, and I, I think that as we, um, as we're looking at that in education, especially at North High School, it is, it's, it's really a, a fine line between being so authoritarian with it that you can't do it because they are, and being authoritative or can say, man, you shouldn't. How can we change that behavior? So I think that's, that's just kind of where we are. That's the, the long answer, I think, to your short question.
Oh, thank you very much. I, uh, yeah, we can clap, that's great. So I appreciate that because you said a lot in your long answer, uh, that I think was really some great points that you mentioned in regards to, uh, what you're seeing based on students. And then also you added some information for parents and some things that they should know. And then you also touched on some of the discipline pieces. And so that's actually something we hear quite a bit from parents. Uh, there have been several parents who've said, you aren't doing anything. You're, nothing is happening to these students. They're allowed to say at school, suspension is the way that we need to go.
What do I say to that?
Is suspension the way to go?
Well, if, if I thought sending them away to another environment that would completely change their mindset, get them to believe in themselves and make a change and not have access or space or time to use vaporizer, then I'd say, okay. But whether they're at school, whether they're at home, or whether they're wa- But whether they're at school, whether they're at home, or whether they're walking home or at McMaster Park, those choices are there. So I don't, and honestly, I, I've been at North High School since 1991 and I don't know that there's, in my professional and personal opinion, a better place to be when you're in trouble. And the trouble being, I have a consequence or I have a need. And so suspensions are purposeful. And, and I think when, if, if my belief is that the suspension is going to cure, it's not. We have too much history that suspensions don't work. Suspensions and consequences, detention, Saturday schools, jail time, they work for those of us that are moved not to get there. But when we get to the point of where I'm suspending a kid, I have to agree, it doesn't work because they knew it was coming and it's here. So it wasn't a mindset change, it wasn't a, an instance that curtailed a decision or choice, it was just part of what they already had planned or what they would expect, they're not shocked by it. There's not a student that says, ah, I'm suspended, but why? They know why. And so to, to answer the question, do suspensions work? Not when you already get one. They work for all of us that don't want a suspension. Hey, I don't want a speeding ticket, I'm not the fastest guy on the freeway, but I know my brother just gets speeding tickets and he accounts for them, he's, I'm going to get one. So having a consequence like a suspension is valuable for a community at large because it does set a bar or set a tone for what we want community members to do and how we want them to behave. But for those students that, that go to that line, they're already willing to have the consequence. So giving it to them, yeah, I, I have and we do, but it's not always the best decision. Because sometimes keeping them close, where I can say, hey, I want to help you, there's more to it than this, like you're saying, create that relationship, that's probably what I believe in the long run will get them to be 25 better than a suspension will get them to be 25.
Thank you for that, I appreciate that. And you, we can clap, that's why. So, so you mentioned the cure and we do have our wonderful Dr. Hanson here. And so I think it's important for us to talk with you from a medical perspective because you're in the emergency room, so you see so much, a wide array of folks who come in. And so we want to know from you, what are you seeing from a youth vaping perspective?
Yeah, that's an interesting question because if you look at the numbers, some of the stuff Alex presented, if you look at the population in the US and the number of vape users, you know, the numbers that are reported, 2,700 or so, 2,200 acute lung injuries, and I'll get into what that looks like and what that means, and 49 deaths. So in the broad perspective of the total population and the total ER visits, those numbers are low, but, but they're, but they're powerful in the sense that, let me paint a picture of what one of these kids looks like when they come in, when they have an acute lung injury. So if you, if you go to the CDC and you see some of these terms, you're going to see something called eVali, E-V-A-L-I, and that's e-cigarette or vaping acute lung injury. Acute lung injury is a consequence of the chemicals and all of those products you saw inhaled into the lungs, which is an interface with your bloodstream. That's an environment that in a healthy setting is an exchange of oxygen and carbon dioxide, right? It's a minute-by-minute thing that we need to survive. There are some products, as was mentioned earlier, vitamin E acetate and THC-associated vape and e-cigarette products that have now been associated very clearly with patients that are dying. And what we're seeing, and we're trying to gather this information because this is all new, what we're seeing in the ER across the US in these really sick patients, and we're trying to figure out who are those patients so we can attempt to prevent it amongst all the other stuff we're talking about, nicotine. A recent case that came to Torrance Memorial, it was about a 21-year-old that had about two days of cough and was feeling short of breath, had a little bit of a fever, we're seeing a lot of GI illness, so kind of looks like the flu, a little vomiting, maybe some diarrhea, a cough, and they just don't feel well, right? They come in, they're short of breath, they're really working to breathe, oxygen levels are dropping. And so this recent case, you know, a normal oxygen level in most patients that are healthy is 95 to 100%, right? You ever looked at a monitor, if you've been to your doctor? Patient levels are dropping into the 80s, all of the oxygen, all of the tools we had, not successful, so the patient needed to be intubated, so on a ventilator, on a breathing machine in the ICU. There are really very few things that can do that to a young, healthy lung or young, healthy 21-year-old, other than exposures of the stuff we're talking about. So this stuff is really hitting the educational side of my profession as an emergency doctor and we're all talking about it and we're all looking for it and we're all, we're all out on the, you know, on the prowl because we're trying to figure out, we don't want to miss these cases. So this acute lung injury is a consequence of chemicals that nobody knows what's in these products, right? These are not regulated by the FDA, how can you regulate 18,000 products? It's like impossible. And they can be bought on the black market and online. So we don't know what's in it, we know that it's killing people and those numbers are rising. One caveat in this time of the year is that as the flu rises, we all know flu is deadly and if you add flu plus this acute lung injury from these vaping illnesses, we know these numbers are going to rise. I guarantee you, if you check that CDC website at the end of January, we're going to be over 100. Because the flu is dangerous in and of itself, you add that plus this exposure and there's, you combine any two injuries to the lung like that and there's no question that this is going to go up. So the majority of vape users, if you look at those numbers, they do okay. But we don't know which one of you or which one of them is going to have this consequence where this 21-year-old's life is completely turned upside down. The end game of that patient or the ones that die require advanced life support. So the bloodstream, the lungs are no longer working, the blood is filtered through a machine, it's called an ECMO machine, used in the sickest of all patients, only at the biggest academic centers. And we hope we can keep them alive long enough, in the sickest cases only, to let the lungs recover, to see if those lungs are working again, get, you know, use their own lungs again, get off of the breathing tube. And that is probably a six-to-eight month recovery if you recover. So that's the end game, that's the case that we're looking at, that's the case. I was on last night, right, and I'm overnight and someone comes in short of breath and they're 20 and their oxygen is 85%, I'm on the lookout for that. And so those are the numbers that are rising and it's scary because we don't know which one of those patients is going to come in like that and how we could have prevented it because there's so much unknown about the products.
Wow, thank you for that. You talked about the symptoms, which I think a lot of times people don't know what to look out for, but what about some of the other medical things that the parents should know? Other medical symptoms, other medical issues that may arise that the parents should know about if their teen is vaping?
So the, if it's not one of these very acute presentations which are not subtle, it's not something you'd be like, well, should we go on, this is a very sick-looking patient and everybody would either be calling 911 or going in because things change very quickly. The other side of it is what we've talked about, which is really nicotine, right? And it's nicotine dependence and its behavioral changes. So those things don't tend to come into the emergency department, so it's not what I see on a daily basis. But if it's not these new acute lung injury, right, these advanced cases that are rare but rising, then it's really about the nicotine, it's about the behavioral changes, it's the addictive behavior, it's the hiding and it's the why. I think that's one of the biggest things I've even learned from this presentation is that we have to get to the why. And when I see kids and I see so much anxiety in 12-year-olds, 15-year-olds, 21-year-olds, 30-year-olds, and it's always the why and there's so much, there's so many symptoms that, right? People get crushing chest pain and the entire evaluation is normal and they're anxious and they talk about, you know, the things that are going on. So I think the substances and the nicotine as a symptom is the, the brain changes, the behavioral changes, the mood swings, the depression. And so I see that as patients that come in with random symptoms, abdominal pain, chest pain, headaches, and at the end of the day, we don't come up with much of an answer other than we peer into the social history a little bit and the what's going on at home, what's going in life, what's going on at school, is there bullying? And so I think the nicotine then starts to play a role as a drug and as an addictive chemical and, you know, then we see occasionally nicotine leading to heroin, to cocaine, and really some catastrophic outcomes. And we talked about this a little bit earlier, but, you know, the big thing we're seeing with opiates and heroin is really just these patients that, you know, end up stopping breathing because it depresses the respiratory center. So we do see that the vaping and the nicotine leads to more potentially life-threatening cases down the line.
Thank you for that. You talked about anxiety, young people and them reporting anxiety. And so I wanted to talk to Desiree about what are the things that you're seeing? Because we've heard several adults here talk about anxiety and depression and the things that young people are reporting to us, but what are you seeing on campus? What are you hearing, all of that?
It's definitely more of like a peer pressure thing to fit into society that's taken a toll on the community and school. And I've seen a lot of young teens using like vapes and these marijuana wax pens every day and it's getting to be like an addiction problem. And I see them using it all the time, literally like anywhere it can be, in the halls, some, some kids even use it discreetly in class or in the bathrooms is where you usually see it. And it's crazy like how these kids will use it discreetly knowing like, one, it's disrespectful to even do that in front of an adult, knowing that you're not allowed to do that. And two, knowing that they see these effects that it can have on both young adults and older adults on their bodies. And it's difficult to, for even like kids that don't use these type of devices because it, it can affect like when we need to use the restrooms because that's where they mainly use it and us kids have to wait our turns because these kids are going out there to get rid of this urge to do it and we even have to wait longer lines and it's just crazy to see.
Wow, I'm sorry to hear that. We have heard about incidents of students who've told their parents, you know, I, I don't feel safe to go into the bathrooms, I'm concerned about it or it's just so much smoke everywhere, you know, what do I do? So for students who are using, how can we discourage them from using? Like how can we get them to say no or make the choice not to use?
I definitely, recently we've actually put up posters in front of our bathrooms which show us like the real effects that it adds on our bodies and I actually really appreciate that kids are able to see this type of stuff and it really like sort of scares them straight. You'd think it would scare them straight when, sometimes it really doesn't, which is sad to see, but I definitely see like, say like, if some, a student was to come up to me and say like, I don't want to get peer pressured into doing this and I, I don't know which path to choose, I definitely point them towards like a counselor, definitely not down the path to using this type of stuff because in the long run, it can become an addictive form.
Thank you for saying that. So you talked about what you would do to be able to encourage them to seek help from a counselor. What's some advice, you know, another piece of advice that you would give a student who is currently vaping?
I definitely like, it's rude to say, but I definitely say straight up, you're not cool doing it. It's, you're only harming yourself, even your parents seeing you like use this, it's disrespectful to do in front of them. And they need to learn that there actually is like a life-threatening situation that can be involved in it.
Thank you for that. And so we're actually going to continue with Officer Tatum because we talked about what's happening in the schools and as a school resource officer and someone who is actively engaged with the schools, what are you seeing from a law enforcement perspective regarding vaping?
It's prevalent, although not, not everybody is, is doing it as kids would have you believe, those who are doing it. It is, it spans the groups that you might assume normally, let's say, pre-e-cigarettes or these wax pens, you, you could pretty much pick out the potheads and that, that group. Well, it's no longer just that group, 100% of that group is doing it, don't get it wrong. However, now some of the 4.0 kids are doing it, some of the baseball team, well, that was always the case necessarily, but other groups that you wouldn't necessarily think are doing it, are now doing it. That's been some of my observation.
So how is law enforcement making sure that young people don't have access to these devices?
If we are parents ourselves, we are starting at home and ensuring that our kids don't have access. Aside from that, we are encouraging parents that are not us to do the same thing because that's where it starts. It's not, it's not a law enforcement thing or even a school thing. It's a, it's a, it starts, it starts at the home with the parents to, to disallow access or even to discourage the desire to use it. The access is not exactly in our control. We, we, we enforce the laws that are on the books, but the legislature writes them. So they're being sold and not yet regulated to the extent that they're probably going to be in the next 10 years. So as of right now, we're, we're enforcing the laws that are on the books, but the access is there. So it starts at home with mom and dad.
I appreciate you talking about that because we, well, sometimes hear about parents who think it's okay. It's okay for my child to do it as long as they're with me or it's okay for me to provide it because when I was young, my parent, not when I was young, but when I was young, my parent used to send me to the store to purchase cigarettes for them or whatever the case may be. So what about legal ramifications for an adult who chooses to provide, to purchase vape devices for a minor?
So it depends on what the contents of the vape would be. If it's, let's say, nicotine and only nicotine, the, the adult could be cited for contributing to the delinquency of a minor, which I'm not certain if it's an infraction or misdemeanor, but they'll, they'd have, they'd have fines, I doubt they'd, they wouldn't get, they're not likely to get jail time as we are in California, but they'll have some type of fine. If they, they purchase a, say, wax pen and, and distribute that to a minor, they can, they'll likely see the same, maybe, maybe more extensive fine, maybe some type of community service attached to it, depending on the level at which they're, they're providing marijuana to minors, they may or may not see jail time. But there, there are, there are things that try to deter adults from, again, contributing to the delinquency of minors.
And what about a, a youth who decides that they want to purchase a vape device?
What are the legal ramifications? Should they be caught? So they are, they're likely to be issued a citation and what comes along with that is a, is a fine of approximately $250 for the, for the minor, not the parent. As well as, I believe, 50 hours of community service should the minor not complete this community service or pay the fine. They, once they apply for their driver's license or if they have their driver's license, it'll be suspended. Either before they get it or if they, if they already have it, it'll, it'll be taken away until they take care of that fine. So those are some of the things that are, that are, that are being done. And if I'm not mistaken, the, the penalty is progressive up to a certain point. But yeah, those are, those are the things that they're currently looking at.
Great, thank you for that. So we're actually going to wrap up our panel and I want to find out from each of you some words that you have for the parents. What are some things that you would like the parents to know from your perspective regarding youth vaping?
I'll say, with regard to youth vaping and really any of these behaviors that you don't want to see in your child, it starts with you. More often than not, or nine times out of 10, the parents that are here currently are parents that probably don't have to worry about it because you're, you're doing everything that you need to be doing. So that's a kudos to you. If you are that one out of 10 who is experiencing issues with this and you are present, you are still likely doing what you, what you need to be doing. It's your child that's making the, the decision that they're making. And God bless you, you're going to, you're going to go right, right, right along with the consequence that they suffer because you love them, but it's, it's in their, it's, it's in their hands because you're doing what you're supposed to do as a parent, so keep doing it. And don't pass the buck, although the school, law enforcement and the rest of the village that's here to raise your, help raise your kids, to help raise your kids, we're not leaving, we'll, we'll be there, but you're, you're, you are the chief of this particular village, so be that.
Thank you, Officer Tatum. Desiree?
I definitely tell parents to talk to their children. I definitely tell parents to talk to their children, go the extra mile and see if they're okay mentally, physically, just as much as you would practice safe sex with your child. This, today's society, you should talk to them about nicotine use, marijuana use because it has just as much, much effect on their body as it does with safe sex practicing.
Thank you, Desiree. Dr. Hanson?
I guess I would say that if this is an issue for you and you're here because of that, start now. This needs to, you know, you gotta get a handle on the, on the addiction. You never know when it's, it's your kid's day or it's your day to have that picture that I just described to you and you don't wanna get that call that I have to make more often than I'd like, that your kid's in the emergency department and you can't talk to him right now. And it's entirely preventable. So you've been educated and now it's time to do the work.
Thank you, Dr. Hanson. Andrew?
I, I would say two things, engage and offend. Meaning that I think I, when I recognize a lot of, in my own parenting, when my kids are now grown and I see parents in the school, engage your students. Life is busy, but include them. Include yourself in their lives and that's why offending them. Listen, go through their stuff, that is okay. They should not have pass codes on their phones because they're not paying for the phones, they're your phones. And I'm okay, when my sons are mad at me, I've done the right thing. So engage your students, engage your families in activities, togetherness, and don't be afraid to climb on top of that bunk bed, don't be afraid to go through the backpack. If they're mad at you, then you've done the right thing.
Thank you, Andrew. Rebecca?
I like the engage and just having an open dialogue with your kids, talking to them, asking how they are, not being afraid to ask the hard questions of, you know, things that you might be afraid to know, asking those questions and, and being there for the answer. And, you know, if a teen does come to you and tells you something, you know, that they're vaping or anything else that they're dealing with, react with compassion instead of judgment and let them know that you're, you're gonna help them get the help they need.
Thank you, Rebecca. Alex?
I just, I'm sure there's resources already out there, but just as important it is for the kids to be talking, if there's parents going through this, there's two really good programs. There's Al-Anon for parents if you're going through it. One is Clear Recovery, Redondo has one Saturday at 4:30 and that's more adolescent-based and for young adult-based at St. Francis Church in Malaga Cove at 7:00 PM on Thursday. I think that's pretty cool that there is something for the parents out there to be able to talk amongst each other as well because like we're all saying, nobody has the exact answer, but it's great for you guys to rap with each other as well. You know, there's signs when you can see somebody beginning to harm themselves with an addictive device. Typically, it's a change in schedule, irritability, aggression, a new set of friends, a lack of motivation in a sport they were doing. Please look out for those signs. We've used the word "talk," but I think even as much as important is "listen." Some of this could be a cry for help. And I think as much as we wanna be there to tell and say, "Hey, this is the right thing to do," listening is just as powerful. And I don't have any children, but, you know, I, I wish you all the best of luck because don't be too hard on yourselves. Again, this is an individual choice and at the end of the day, no matter how much unconditional love you, you show somebody, we do come down to our own choices. So I just hope to help out along the way and be an inspire, inspiration from a, a better angle.
Thank you, Alex. So I just want to say thank you to our panel. We really appreciate you all for taking the time to be, for taking the time to be here tonight with all of us. I do want to leave you with some final words. I concur with our panel. We definitely need to have conversations with our children and we need to make sure we're listening. Listening is extremely important and a lot of times we feel like we're the best listeners, but I bet there's someone in your life that will tell you, "You don't really listen as much as you could." And so it's important that we're picking up on those cues from our children and we're making sure that we're engaging them in healthy conversations and that our first reaction isn't, "Oh my gosh, I can't believe you!" But it's, "Okay, what's going on? Let's talk about this." And figuring out what the why is because there's a reason behind all of these things that are happening. And so it's important that not only are we engaging our children in healthy conversations, but you also, you all are also continuing to educate yourselves. And it started tonight, and for some of you it may have started before you came tonight, but I wanna encourage you to, to continue to educate yourselves and use Torrance Unified, use our law enforcement agencies, Torrance Memorial, use our students and Alex and our mental health therapists as opportunities to be able to engage in healthy conversations with them and learning additional resources. So thank you all again for coming. And as a reminder, when we conclude, we'll take a picture following. So I'd like to bring up Dr. Kumpy. Thank you.
Oh, one more round of applause. They did a terrific job. And I think every time I come to one of these events, I learn more and more that helps, helps add to our toolkit so we can better help you and better help and help our students. I did learn because like Alex said, I think earlier in his presentation and, in, in listening to some of the how kids get the products, I immediately wrote to our congressperson and who responded back within 10 minutes and said, "You're right." Because how easy it is to get them by mail, we heard it at a prior event, that they're just going in the mail. It's easier to, to get them that way than even going into a store and there's cameras and people can see. And, and they're going to 7-Eleven and they're getting, you know, a prepaid card and they're, so it's not showing up on, on parents' credit card bills. And they're shipping them to addresses where packages are left, like in apartment complexes, I don't say anonymously, but not at your front door. Or they're sending them to friends' homes who have parents that arrive late at night. And because you can track five, five stops away, three stops away, they're getting delivered to homes that are not theirs and, and getting the devices. California has passed a law and January 1st, there are more restrictions similar to how alcohol comes in the mail. So my understanding of the, of the law that has recently passed that will take effect 2020 is that packaging will have to say that it is a vape product, that it has to, that someone has to be present and sign for the package and show ID. So we'll see how long that takes to, to, to actually materialize, but the state of California has heard from some of the, I think, students that were telling us how easy it was and have, and have put that into a law. So at least there's some, our, our elected officials are helping us with that. So again, thank you very, very much. We know we did not take audience question, do a question and answer. Instead, we had asked our PTA members to forward us questions ahead of time. And so we utilize those to construct the questions tonight. If there is a question that you had hoped would be answered that was not, we will stay here and answer any questions for you. Otherwise, thank you very, very much. Tell your friends, there's still two more dates coming up for, for other events. We have key, different keynotes at all four sessions, so you could actually come to all four events and get, and get a different message each time. Thank you again for coming tonight.